So that this will be available, we can send it out. Thank you all so much for your patience. First of all, welcome to our very first in our series of webinars this year for the Kansas School Board Resource Center. This first one, important first steps to become an effective school board member. If you're unfamiliar with the Kansas School Board Resource Center, just want to make sure you understand that our mission is to help school board members be effective advocates for students and improve academic outcomes. So tonight, we have a couple of speakers with us. I'm going to serve as your host. I am the newly Director of Engagement and Strategy for the Kansas School Board Resource Center. But I'm going to give you, walk you through our agenda for the evening, and then we're going to turn it over to our speakers tonight. We have first who will be speaking with us will be Mike O'Neill, and then Ward Cassidy will be speaking with us about building needs assessment, where to find your district proficiencies, and other board important district policies. As I was failed to say, Mike O'Neill will talk about our legal responsibilities. And we will at the end have a little Q and A for 10 to 15 minutes. If you are able to join us, please put your questions in the chat. I'll follow that. And then I'll be able to ask those questions here at the end of our session. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike or to Ward, sorry, to introduce Mike to us. If you don't know Ward, he's our Executive Director of the Kansas School Board Resource Center. Ward has served as a teacher, a counselor, a principal. He served as the outreach instructor for Fort Hays State University. He was taught as a school and community relations. He served in the state legislature where his duties included Vice Chair of Education, Appropriations and Education, Budget Chairman. He serves as the Board of Directors for the Kansas State High School Activities Association and Secondary School Principals. So he knows all about all the things that are going on. I see that someone was able to use a link that I sent and it worked. So maybe we'll have other people joining us. I'm going to turn it over to Ward. He's going to introduce Mike, and then Mike will take it from there, and then Ward will follow up, and we'll have questions at the end.
All right. Thank you, Tracy. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, here we go. Kansas School Board Resource Center. I've really enjoyed this organization. We don't charge for any, anybody for anything. We're at school board member service. An exciting thing that's happened is we now have a national organization that we're part of. It's the School Boards for Academic Excellence. And the reason I brought that up, one of the questions I had today was trying to find superintendent evaluations. And I reached out to some of the people nationwide, and I've gotten back some really good ones. And Tracy and I are going to go through them and try them, put them up on our website for people to use. Our whole idea is to try and get you guys the information that you really want to have. So again, number one goal, improve student achievement. Not going to go into the problems that we're having. Now, let's just go right to Mike. And Mike will tell us about the legal responsibilities of the school board member and whatever time we have left tonight. I've got a whole bunch of topics, but we're going to do this a lot of times. So I guess the last comment I would make right now is that anytime tonight, if you have a question, or anytime in the future, if you have something that you would like us to discuss in this, please send us the questions and we will research it and present it in one of these webinars. With that, Mike O'Neill, go for it.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Ward. What she, what Tracy didn't add to Ward's resume is he was the best first baseman and softball player has ever, ever had the privilege of playing softball with.
Because you were the second baseman.
Yeah. That, that goes back a long time. Well, first of all, I apologize that the first speaker of your series is a lawyer, and you're going to have to listen to a lawyer talk about legal responsibilities. But this is a, this is a passion of mine. I served in the legislature for many years and, and served on as a Chairman of the Education Committee at one time. And, and a lot of my work after getting out of the legislature has been on K-12 issues. And it's, it's a real passion. The thing that I have been somewhat amazed about is, and this is not universal, but there is a lot of misunderstanding among individuals who have served on school boards or who are thinking about serving on a school board about what it, what it entails. And a lot of misconceptions about the role. And so this is really just going to be sort of a school board member one-on-one, one-on-one. And what I'm going to be talking about, there's going to be a lot of quoting that's going on because I want to give you the foundation, the things that are in the Constitution, the things that are in the statutes that deal directly with the responsibilities of a school board member. And, and the first one is, is our constitutional authority and mandate for the school board members. If you could go to that slide, Tracy. So the board's authority comes directly from the Kansas Constitution. So this goes back to, this goes back to when we had schools formed, public schools formed in the state of Kansas. This is nothing recent. So the foundation for local school boards is out of Article Six, Section Five of the Kansas Constitution. I've quoted it there. Local public schools under the general supervision of the State Board of Education shall be maintained, developed, and operated by locally elected boards. And what's important there is, is that the writers of the Constitution, the, the education article use three verbs. It is the responsibility of these locally elected boards to maintain, develop, and importantly, operate the, the schools. Now, this is a constitutional responsibility, not a statutory constitution responsibility. So the founders of the education article placed a great deal of responsibility, a great deal of power with locally elected boards. Kansas is, is very passionate about having direct access by the electorate to the individuals that are going to be having a profound influence on their lives, whether it's tax policy, whether it's education, what have you. There has been a lot of, of talk about what the Constitution means by, under the general supervision of the State Board of Education. There's actually a Supreme Court case on that. General supervision by the State Board has been interpreted by the Kansas Court to mean something more than advice, but something less than control. That was a case that involved a school district actually suing the, the State Board, basically claiming that the, the State Board was encroaching on the responsibilities of the local board. And so the court did not set a bright line rule, but it did indicate that the State Board has a profound and important role to play. But stop short of saying that public schools are under the direct control of the State Board of Education. Other provisions in this, in the statute talk about a, basically a partnership between the State Board of Education and the legislature. The State Board has certain duties, but those duties can be supplemented by acts of the legislature. You will see in the statutes or other duties as may be provided by law. And when you see as may be provided by law, they're talking about a statute passed by the legislature. So again, local boards are constitutional. School districts and their administrators and their leadership are statutory. There's also legislation that's been around forever and ever that allows the local boards to delegate tasks to the administration. They may delegate those tasks. They're not, they're not mandated to do that. Ultimate control and responsibility lies with the local board. Now, we know as a practical matter, over time, there's a lot of delegation that has gone on. The, the, the local boards are certainly not 24/7. They place a lot of responsibility with the administration as they should. And they allow for the, the schools to pretty much have building leadership that takes care of, of the details. Keep in mind, however, that the organizational chart is the local elected board has the power and the duty to maintain, develop, and operate those schools. So when they delegate to the administration, the administration remains accountable to the local board. And if the local board wants to change something, they can change something. It's not a situation where the administration is in charge and the local board has to ask permission to, to do any changes. Next slide, please. So what is the statutory, we've talked about the constitutional authority. What's the statutory authority and mandate? And I'm going to cite several statutes. At, at this point, I will tell you that there is an expectation that the State Board of Education will put together a, a manual of all of the operative laws dealing with schools in, in one place. And the way the statute is worded is that they're, they are to make those available to anybody that is under contract. I've, I've never quite understood that wording because one of the most important individuals that you would want to have, have that book or, or a set of statutes would be your local boards. And I hope that has taken place. Anecdotally, we find that some don't have access to that, some, some do. But I would, I would certainly encourage board members or prospective board members to, to, to get the, the Bible, if, if you will, on the statutes and rules that, that apply to school board members. KSA 72134 requires that local boards appoint a superintendent who is quote, "subject to the orders, rules, and regulations of the Board of Education." This statute contemplates that boards will have and, and develop orders, rules, and regulations. And that is really your, your guiding document that you should use in your day-to-day activities as a board members. KSA 1138 allows local boards to quote, "prescribe courses of study, adopt rules and regulations for teaching, prove and adopt suitable textbooks and study materials subject to any State Board of Education rules." In addition, the board quote, "may transact all school district business and adopt policies that the board deems appropriate to form, to perform its constitutional duty to maintain, develop, and operate local public schools." Again, a very important document that needs to be developed at the local board level. And, and these rules are the rules that need to be followed as you control the workings of your local school district. Next slide. So one of the, I, I'm going to spend some time tonight talking about what I consider to be one of the most important duties and responsibilities of the local board member. For decades, this is nothing new, for decades, Kansas has had a statutory requirement that each year quote, "the Board of Education shall conduct an assessment of the educational needs of each attendance center in the district," end quote. The intent there, and it's stated in statute, is the board is required to utilize this information when building and approving annual budgets. And I'm, I'm going to take a moment here to talk anecdotally about what we've heard and what I've heard from some local board members who have somehow been given the understanding that their role is to simply look over the proposed budget submitted by the administration, which is totally appropriate for the administration to build a base budget, but that they're simply to look at it and, and approve it at a board meeting. Approval of the board is, is a requirement. The board's input into that budget is a fundamental obligation of the board, and there needs to be a lot of board input and involvement. A shocking number of board members we've visited with have never been briefed on this responsibility or have been inadequately briefed. Or if they knew about it, they assumed their only function was to approve the ultimate proposed budget. It was never the intent of the legislature to have school district administration in charge of this function or its compliance. And at this point, I would hesitate to say, this is a function in terms of developing budget documents that is something that is universally delegated to school leadership in order for them to, to build a, a base budget. But the ultimate responsibility for a school district budget and a budget that makes sure it's taking care of the needs of the students is the responsibility of the local board. Next slide. Because of some information that we've received that this is not a well-understood statute, the legislature in the, in the last two or three years has amended the needs assessment law to place additional emphasis on it. And like Ward said, we're not going to get into a discussion tonight about the student outcomes that we're very worried about. But this needs assessment, as I will explain, is probably the most important function to get to the issue of student performance. KSA 721163, the needs assessment statute, has been amended to emphasize the importance of the local board's role in ensuring that district budgets are developed with student achievement at the forefront. Not only must the board conduct the building needs assessment, the board minutes by statute must reflect that the board not only reviewed the assessments, but also evaluated the assessments and then indicate quote, "how the board used such assessment in the approval of the schools, of the district's budget." The statute now mandates that the school district budget quote, "shall allocate sufficient monies in a manner reasonably calculated such that all students may achieve the goals set forth in KSA 723218." Most of you who have served on the board or have been following education policy in the last few years will recognize those as the Rose capacities. I'll just briefly talk about the, the, the origin of this quote. And that is, as you know, school finance was in the litigation stages for years and years, starting out with the Montoy case, ending up with six different versions of the Gannon decision. And in the Gannon decision, ultimately, the, the Supreme Court of Kansas ruled that this, the legislature had the duty to develop a, a method of funding schools that in structure and in implementation was reasonably calculated such that all students may achieve the goals set forth in KSA 723218. So this statute is a, is a direct quote out of that Supreme Court decision. The difference is, anyone who follows school finance knows that the structure is uniquely a function of the legislature. They're the ones that come up with a funding formula. However, the implementation, the allocation of those funds is strictly a function of local school districts. In other words, the legislature does not tell the local school districts how to spend their money. I don't think anybody would really think that was a good idea. The legislature doesn't have that level of expertise to, to actually then parcel out to what is a 286 school districts, how they're going to spend that money. So in large part, the legislative function is satisfied once they develop a school finance formula that in structure is equitable and alloc, and, and provides funds in a manner that the legislature feels is reasonably calculated such that if the implementation works, all students will achieve the goals set forth in, in the statute. So this statute now makes it very clear that the responsibility for allocation is a responsibility of the local school districts. And that, I, I cannot overemphasize the importance of that particular provision. Next slide. The needs assessment law requires that for each school year, the local board must review the state assessment results. And so this is, this is not, this is not just a check-your-box exercise. This is serious stuff where, where the school board needs to see in various forms, what this state assessment will look like. Because it's the state assessments that need to drive decisions about what we're going to do the next school year to address any of the issues that have been identified in the school, in the state assessments. So the statute requires that the board must review the state assessment results and then document these three things. A, the barriers that must be overcome to have all students achieve proficiency above Level Two for grade level academic expectations on such assessments. B, any budget actions including possible reallocation of resources that should be taken to address and remove such barriers. And C, the amount of time the board, the board estimates it will take for all students to achieve proficiency above Level Two for grade level academic expectations on the state assessments if such budget actions are implemented. And as I mentioned before, the statute is directive, it's mandatory. It's not just a board check-in-the-box exercise to show that they looked at some state assessments and, and put a stamp of approval on it. This is serious, this is very serious business because we are, the legislature is very concerned about what they're seeing. Students in three and four, levels three and four, great. They're, they're doing well. Unfortunately, we're seeing way too many in levels one and two, which are not according to the Kansas State Department of Education, not academically prepared. And all of that data has to be uploaded and fed to the, to the nationals. And that is the criteria that is used. The court in Gannon, in, in ordering that more money be made available, said that no matter how the, the department characterizes student performance, the bottom line is proficiency. That's what we're wanting. We're wanting every child to be proficient. And far too many are not proficient at this point. And so, so, you know, ground zero is having local boards who control these school districts take a look at this assessment data and make the decisions. And many times, it will differ from a proposed budget that is put before a school board members. Often, we see a situation where all we're doing is taking a budget from the previous year with, with all the categories and just managing some different numbers, whether it's applying an inflation factor or what have you. And, and, you know, updating certain assets that are, that need to be updated and things of that nature, kind of tinkering with it, and then presenting a budget. And far too often, in, in my humble opinion, not enough time is being spent determining how the budget is going to drive student performance. Are we happy with student performance? And if not, at least for a certain segment of our student population, what can we do as board members through the budget process to make a difference in the coming year? This statute, these recent amendments to the statute are really tailored to board members. This, this is what, you're really our boots on the ground to make, to make a difference. Next slide. Law is intended to make local boards play a critical role in taking actions needed to improve student performance. I would argue that this has always been the function. It just doesn't, it just hasn't been spelled out quite as clearly in statute. Instead of building budgets based on last year, or because we've always done it this way, budget should reflect what the board has learned from those state assessments and how allocation of resources plays a role in student outcomes. How will the budget you next approve ensure a better per-student performance? Not just overall, not just, well, let's take a snapshot of last year for, for all the classes, and let's look at it this year and see that we've maybe improved a couple percentage points or whatever. And no, how will the budget you approve ensure a better per-student performance outcome next year? How many students, Level Two or Level One, will continue to be left behind if their educational needs are not addressed through the budget process? The Kansas State Board of Education has established a budget planning process and their goal, quote, "to prepare each student for post-secondary opportunities and success." That frankly is a no-brainer. I don't think we'd find anybody that would disagree with that. The outcome that the, that the Board of Education wants is to align, quote, "align school district budgeting with improvement needs for each student as identified by the building needs assessments." To the State Board's credit, they have taken to heart what the legislature has challenged them to do. And that is, we need to focus on student improvement, and we need to start with having legitimate, good, well-researched building needs assessments. Frankly, build, budget should be built from the classroom up, not from the administration building down. And that's not, that's not intended to be a criticism of administration in any way. Because a, a lot of, a lot of budgets that we see even in the private sector are too heavy with, with what administration wants. And then we get down to where the rubber really meets the road. We all know that where the rubber meets the road is the teacher in the classroom and what those needs are. And I'll tell you in a minute how even the Department of Education feels about the importance of that classroom. Next slide. One statute that, that seems to not be well-understood or underutilized is the statute on the, the appointments, school site councils. 725170 requires that each school and every district establish a school site council. Now, these are comprised by statute of a principal, teacher representatives, other school personnel, parents, the business community, and other community groups. And I won't go into all the details, but it's a fairly lengthy statute giving the site councils a full range of input opportunities to advise and make recommendations to local boards. Personally, I think they're underutilized. This provision appears to be one that, that the legislature intended to have more of an impact than, than what we're seeing. Site councils should be involved when building-based needs assessments are conducted to ensure a full range of, of variety of important inputs. And when you think about it, site councils are made up of local school boards constituents. It's the, the, the people who actually voted for these locally elected school boards are the ones who have a vested interest in, 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 in helping. They're only advisory. There, there's nothing a site council can do that will force local school board or school district to do anything. But they are important resources, and particularly with building needs assessments. And that ESAT, Every Student Succeeds Act, is the federal act recognizes the importance of parental input and, and input of the business community. And so anyway, I would just advise, take, take a look, like, you know, who's on your site councils? How are they being utilized? And don't, don't be shy about asking for input from these, these individuals. Excellent. So every unified school district has the Kansas School, the Kansas State Department of Education's accounting handbook for USDs. Everybody has it. They've published this for years and years so that there's a uniform USD-wide accounting system. And this is actually marvelous because one accounting system for all the various school districts, large, small, medium. And over the years, the technology has gotten to the point where we can track to the dime what school districts are spending and what they're spending it on so the districts can compare district to district. Taxpayers and parents can see what their districts are doing. It, it's, it's marvelous. That's not the point of what I'm going to talk about with the accounting handbook. Account code 1000 is the category for instruction. And in that handbook, it tells you what instruction is and what instruction isn't. And I'm just going to take a moment and read it to you. Instruction includes the activities directly, dealing directly with the interaction between teachers and students. Teaching may be provided for students in the school classroom in another location such, such as a home or hospital and another learning situation such as those involving co-curricular activities. This includes expenditures that were Yeah, this includes expenditures that were formally reported under another, uh, account code. Teaching may also be provided through some other approved mediums such as two-way interactive video, television, radio, tele- telephone and correspondence. This was printed long before COVID. So we, uh, we know through COVID how teaching, uh, had to be innovative and we had to use a lot of different, uh, tools in order to get the education product to deliver to our kids. Included here are the activities of aides or classroom assistants of any type, like clerks and graders, teaching machines, et cetera, which it's, uh, assist in the instructional process. So this is the definition of instruction. Any expenditure that is for instruction goes under count code one thousand. Okay? Next slide. In the same accounting handbook, there is a incredibly strong statement on the importance of instruction in the handbook. Quote, "Although all other functions are important, this function acts as the most important part of the education program, the very foundation on which everything else is built. If this function fails to perform at the needed level, the whole educational program is doomed to failure, regardless of how well the other functions perform." Instruction not only includes the regular face-to-face classroom teaching, but also such things as lab sessions, independent work, and education field trips. I, I, I am struck by the fact that in this kind of official document, the state, uh, Kansas State Department of Education has gone so far as to suggest that the whole educational program is doomed to failure if you don't get the in- instruction part right. So we, uh, school boards at every meeting hear all sorts of wonderful things that are going on in their school districts. And those are all important functions. It says so right there. All these functions are important. But the function that acts as the most important part of the education program is the instruction portion. By far, quoting again from the handbook, "by far the biggest cost items in this function are teacher salaries and associated costs such as social security, fringe benefits, all that. Other major costs are providing substitutes, peer professionals who work with teachers. All of the materials needed in the delivery of the instructional program by the teachers and helpers are another major cost." Incidentally, I'm, I'm, I'm amazed by the number of individuals that don't understand that an instructional cost that goes into account code one thousand are all the things that a teacher needs in the classroom. Yet how many times do we hear about teachers feeling they have to go out to their local Walmart and buy supplies? This accounting handbook has about thirteen pages alphabeticalized, alphabetized, excuse me. I did get an education at one point in time. Alphabetized, alf- alphabetized, showing all the things that you can spend money on for the classroom. I challenge anybody to look at that list and find something that a teacher is currently having to go to Walmart to buy out of his or her own pocket that isn't covered on that list. That's sort of an aside, but we hear that a lot and it's, it, 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 it really saddens me because our teachers need the support, they deserve the support. And if they're not getting it, they should because it's, it's within the most important account code the school district will have. Sorry for the digression. Costs that do not involve teachers, teachers, helpers, peer professionals, and students' actual learning should not be included in this category. So if you look at the handbook, there are all sorts of account codes for everything else. And so believe me, no matter what the expenditure is, there'll be a place for, uh, in the handbook. But the accounting, but this instruction, I, I can't think of how they could have worded it any stronger than what they have. Next slide. So, as a, as a result of, uh, the, the litigation process where the court was, was convinced at one point that if the legislature would just spend more money, we would get these outcomes. And I, I don't, I don't blame the court. They, they took a lot of evidence. They, they, they had a lot of things to, to review. And they, they were sincerely, um, um, convinced that we, we needed to spend more money, particularly on the, these twenty-five to thirty percent of, um, underperforming students, mostly minorities, socio-economically challenged, educationally challenged students. So, this was in two thousand five. This statute seventy-two fifty-one ninety-one was passed in two thousand five. It states, "It is the public policy goal of the state of Kansas that at least sixty-five percent of the monies appropriated, distributed, or otherwise provided by the state to school districts shall be expended in the classroom or for instruction." Getting back to the, the statement of how important instruction is. This policy goal since two thousand five, there has not been one year where that policy goal was achieved. Instructional spending was a little over fifty percent then, and even now is just over fifty percent. And again, we know that because of the uniform accounting system. We know what is being spent on, on instruction. You can take a look at the, at the numbers as, as are reported, assuming they're being reported fairly. And that has never gotten to sixty-five percent, hasn't even gotten close. So let, let's think about this for a minute. The cumulative effect of not following that statutory goal, not a mandate, it's not a mandate, the legislature didn't go that far. But a Republican legislature and a Democrat governor signed that legislation. There's a bipartisan statement in the, in the statutes that the public policy goal of the state of Kansas is that we need to be spending that kind of money for instruction. The cumulative effect of not following the statutory goal over the intervening years is that over twelve billion with a B dollars that should have been allocated and spent for instruction was instead spent on other items. And now we've seen that overall outcomes have not improved. And in some places, like with some exceptions, notable exceptions, but overall, uh, we've, we've actually seen some decline. And so I, I, this is something that local boards have a responsibility and right to correct. Now, we, we've seen some wonderful changes in schools. We've seen school improvements. We've, we've seen a lot of, uh, additions. Um, and I don't mean just capital improvements. I'm just talking about all sorts of different opportunities. But remember what the handbook says. All those things may be well and good, and they may be great, and we're all proud of them. But if you don't get the instruction piece figured out, your whole system is doomed to failure. So we really need to focus on what, what each student needs and what each classroom needs. Next to, next slide. Fundamental to all this and what we're finding out is, is literacy is the key and literacy by third grade is the key. So KSA seventy-two thirty-two sixty-two establishes the Every Child Can Read Act, which requires every school district to measure and evaluate literacy achievement of eight to three students using state assessments and other assessment tools. And then the districts are required to use this information to provide targeted interventions to the students who are not proficient in literacy. And then as an aside, we now know, the, the KSTE has acknowledged, the state board has acknowledged that we've been teaching literacy incorrectly. Um, and, and a- again, a- no disrespect to, to any of the teachers, that, that's kind of what, there was sort of a curriculum that was going around that, that, uh, people bought into. Um, eh, the, the, um, three queuing, it has been found, it has been debunked. It's now a science of reading and teachers are now getting trained, uh, in the, the letters of training. Uh, and we are hoping that every teacher who, who is going to be involved in literacy training is going to get this training, uh, within a very short, uh, period of time. Uh, we've, through some legislative, um, uh, meetings in the last few days, a- actually the experts are saying if a school district is, is, is doing, um, the, the three queuing now, they need to quit. Uh, and, and do something else because it's doing more harm than good. So that's sort of an aside, that's sort of late breaking news, but, but now there's, there's money available to get these teachers trained. Uh, we want as many of these teachers trained in letters training so that we can solve this, um, uh, calculus of getting every student literate by the, by, uh, grade three. KSA seventy-two fifty-one fifty-three requires districts to track and report to the department the longitudinal performance of students that are continuously receiving at-risk students. I think everybody probably understands what longitudinal performance means. This is not just looking at a class from year to year. This is looking at individual students from year to year. So instead of looking at a snapshot of, well, this third grade class and then, um, uh, next year's third grade class was their improvement from this year's third grade class over last year's third grade class. Okay? That may be important to some, but those third graders from last year are now fourth graders. And they'll become fifth graders and they'll become sixth graders. How is Johnny and Susie progressing from third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and so on? And we need to be tracking the performance of those students because we need, as we, eh, as we see a need, we need to address those individual needs year by year. Not wait three or four years out and then discover that, well, they're really not reading at grade level, but we're just passing them along because we, this is not the curriculum that we're teaching this year. Uh, and again, no, uh, uh, no disrespect to the teachers. They're, they're my heroes. It's, it's up to, uh, leadership to make sure that we're doing those things and giving the teachers the right tools in, in order, in order to make these kids successful. And part of that is requiring that we look at longitudinal performance of students. Um, and next slide, let's go to the next slide. So we all know, uh, uh, about the, the levels of one and two. We also know that districts get at-risk waiting. They get extra funding for kids that are identified by the schools as being at risk of not being a- able to graduate for wh- whatever reason. Uh, the proxy, as you know, uh, free to reduce lunch. Uh, but then the school districts get to decide on their own which particular kids are at risk and, and should be provided these services. So here's the statute. Fifty-two fifty-one fifty-three sets out the mandate and restrictions on the use of at-risk funds. By law, they can only be used to provide students identifiable, identified, I'm sorry. Quote, "Provide students identified as eligible to receive at-risk educational programs or service with additional educational opportunities, interventions, and evidence-based instructional services above and beyond regular education services." This is word for word out of the statute. Sadly, notwithstanding this clear mandate, the legislature has commissioned first, a legislative post audit to determine whether that money was being properly spent. It came back and the legislative post audit said, no, it's not being spent the way it, it was supposed to. So legislators told the districts, here's the law. Follow the law. We now have a second consecutive legislative post audit that just came out recently that concluded that the audited districts were still not following the law. At-risk students were not receiving services targeted to their individual needs. Best example I can give you is, um, um, uh, or, or districts that looked at a general classroom and said, well, we've determined that thirty percent of this classroom is made up of at-risk students. So we're going to use thirty percent at-risk funds to fund teacher salaries and, and, and the expenses of this classroom. That is not what the law requires. The law requires that the at-risk students, each individual one of them, receive additional educational opportunities and interventions with evidence-based services above and beyond regular educational services. That means identifying targeted, um, peer-reviewed best practice programs that are tailored to these students. And that is a board function. The board, the boards need to approve which one of these programs are going to be, uh, uh, followed. Now, obviously they'll take recommendations from who they consider the experts to be at the district level. So don't, don't worry about you having to be the experts. You'll, you'll get plenty of advice. But you must insist on getting the, the, the right information that you can make an informed judgment about. Now, unfortunately, the Kansas State Department of Education has published a list that legislative post audit has criticized because in many cases they're nothing more than a bibliography or a link or, or something that's not peer-reviewed, it's not based on best practices. As we speak, the state board of education, eh, 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 has challenged the, the, uh, the Department of Education. And the Department of Education has put this on, they, they've accepted responsibility for updating that list, taking things off the list that shouldn't be on the list and trying to, um, comply with what, uh, the legislature expects in post audits. So I, I give them credit. I, I'm, I'm concerned that it's taken longer than it needed to. But you, you should be looking at a new list, uh, here. They're hoping to have a list. They were supposed to have a list available this month and approved. Um, it, it, it's not ready yet, they say. I hope it's ready by the end of legislative session.
Hey Mike?
Yes?
Need to interrupt. I don't know if Tracy, can we go beyond our eight o'clock time?
Yes, I believe we can.
Okay. I didn't know if they were going to set our zoom off or not at eight o'clock.
Eh, we shouldn't, but we'll see. Unfortunately, um, it's set up by somebody else, but, uh, when I've had experiences before, we've been able to go.
One more interruption. We have several people that have questions. I don't know if we have time for them tonight. I mean, I, I'm all for it if we, if we can, can keep this zoom going.
Well, that's what you get for asking an attorney to, to talk at your first webinar.
You're doing a good job. I've got, uh, now I have another webinar and I can do my stuff. Good job, Mike.
Well, I would, I, I thought I had this time got better than I did, but I, I get to, I get going. Real, real quickly, just, eh, what, what they mean by evidence-based instruction in the statute is an educational delivery system based on peer-reviewed research that consistently produces better student outcomes over a five-year period than would otherwise be achieved. Pretty, pretty self-explanatory. I think they're looking at maybe changing that to a, over a three-year period, uh, so that we don't have to come, yeah, keep, uh, inventing the wheel. You can go to the next slide, if there is one.
There is.
Okay. Um, the at-risk statute requires local boards to annually prepare and submit to the state board a report on the actual at-risk programs the district provided and then include the number of students, the type of at-risk programs provided, the data and research the district used in determining what programs were needed, and a report on the longitudinal tracking of student performance. And whatever else, uh, the state board, uh, comes up with. I, I don't know. How, how, how much more do we have? I, I, I want to make sure that we have time for questions.
Uh, I, I don't know how many more slides you have. Um, do we recall where you are in this process?
I don't think there were.
Mike, there's no time limit on Zoom, so I think.
I'm, I'm going to turn it back over to you and see what kind of questions we have.
Go ahead, Ward. What were you saying?
No, there's no time limit in Zoom. But most people, we, we told them we were going to be here in hours. So for tonight, let's just see what, uh, do you have up on the chat what questions we have for Mike?
Oh, I do have some questions. Um, Mike, do you want to wrap this up before we ask some questions?
Yeah, wrap it up, Mike, and then we'll ask you some questions and I'll wait all of my stuff for the next meeting.
I'm, I, the, the only conclusion I would have is that words are important. And so what I've tried to convey to you is not just my ideas, but exactly what the law requires. And so I, I would certainly commend to, uh, board members, uh, those statutes that I, that I talked about and, and, um, uh, become familiar with them because that's, that's what the law requires and, and that's what your responsibilities, uh, in- include. So I, I'm happy to go to questions right now.
Okay. Well, we can always, uh, record this and send out, even if it's longer, people can look if they need to go a bit further. I know that we started late. Um, would you like for us to go ahead and stop sharing the screen and ask questions, Ward?
Uh, yeah, let's ask, let, let them answer Mike's questions right now.
Okay.
Do you have any specific questions?
I do have some questions. Um, one of those questions is, um, with regard to the new, um, eh, could you advise on the paradox of legal insurance which requires a district to settle a lawsuit whom legal fees reach a certain level? Perhaps it sounds naive, but the court of public opinion doesn't settle. Perhaps it sounds naive, but the court of public opinion doesn't settle, doesn't settle damage. Doesn't settling damage or reputation and undermine board authority at least with regard to employment decision and invite frivolous lawsuits. What do you think?
Well, here here's where I'm going to render a caveat. I, that gets real close to legal advice, every board, every board has legal counsel. On on that particular question, I would strongly encourage you to send that send that legal question up. We want to be real careful as the Kansas School Board Resource Center not to tread in into giving particular legal advice when you have legal counsel. It's something that that I could probably research, I don't know off the top of my head and I'm I'm sorry, I'm not going to give you an answer to that question tonight, but I would just encourage you to consult with your local board counsel on that.
Well, here's another question, maybe this will be a little bit, you know, be able to cover what you were talking about. When the accounting code of one thousand includes the co-curricular activities, does that include teachers who are coaching sports?
Generally, the answer, the answer to that, and again, that that could be a question for the Kansas State Department of Education because they counsel school districts constantly with questions on, does this go in account code one thousand, does it go in some other? If you if you read the definition again of what instruction means. It is the give and take that involves learn student learning. And I I know I learned a lot playing sports, but I don't think that's what they were talking about. I I don't think that, for instance, a coaching salary is probably going to be under account code one thousand. Again, that would be a question that KSTE answers on a daily basis.
Very good. Ward, those are some of the questions I think that really fall within, as you were talking about those boundaries of not getting into the legal advice. There's some things that can be very difficult with that. And so school board members, if you do have some issues as far as legalities are concerned, if you please consult with your with your legal counsel, they'll be able to provide you with some of those specificities. Ward, do you have anything else that you would like to?
Yeah, I'd like to finish up, Tracy.
Okay.
I'm not, we're not, I I have an hours worth, so we have time coming up in the future, but something is going to save me a lot of time and we'll tie into it what some of Mike is saying. Probably the questions I get asked most often are about district information. And one of, can you pull up that Kansas Open Gov site real quick?
I can.
And folks, we will.
Go to, I'm going to go to our Kansas School Board Resource Center because we do have that, the information here that you're able to go to.
Okay, that's not the Open Gov site.
No, but the data links should provide us, allow us to go to the.
Yep, I think at the bottom of it. Well, shoot, we had it, did.
We did, just one moment. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. I had it called up all the time, I just didn't see the tab, thank you.
And folks, if you, if it's the Kansas site is the kansasopengov.org. And there's a category here, if you'll scroll down just a little bit where we can see the categories, where there's a school databank. And again, this site is kansasopengov.org, would you click on that? Or maybe I can, go ahead, Tracy, if you would. And now what we have is district snapshots. And we can find for any school district in the state of Kansas, all these categories. And so often we get asked, I mean, Concordia called me, scroll down to Concordia. And here's all the school districts in Kansas, all your school districts, like I said, such a good turnout. But if you'd go to the that site, there is all the information or a lot of information that you might want to see for your school district. And if you need more information, we can individualize a report. And all you have to do is send us what information you would like and how you would like it, and we can take this and all of this information is straight from the State Department of Education. But I I'm getting phone calls every day about people wanting this information and it's out there, if you'll just look for it. I'll be glad to answer your questions, I'll be glad to scroll down and find this. But for people that are listening tonight, if you want to know about your school district. Go to kansasopengov.org, find your school district. And then you can look at all these different snapshots that you can get and find what you want to have. So with that, being my buddy Mike is windy or more windy than I am. But also a lot more intelligent than I am, really appreciate you, Mike, great job tonight. We will have this taped, we'll put it on our website. I think it's something, the way you presented it, every board member should certainly get that information. We're going to keep it for a long time because you just did a great job explaining what's actually in statute. I mean, I went to school board meetings for twenty years, I never saw a statute, I didn't know any of those things. I do now, and if we're going to improve student education. We've got to get school board members to pay attention to what's going on out there. So Tracy, if you have anything else or Mike, anything else, we'll close it out for tonight. We will be advertising for a monthly. And we still would love to have any of you send us what you would really like us to dialogue and we've got, basically, we have enough left for another whole hour. So we'll tune in again next month and we will have some good information for you. Thank everybody for paying attention tonight, call me if you have any questions.
Thank you, and if you want to send any of your questions, then we'll kind of forward those on if that would be helpful to you if you did get your answers, your questions answered tonight. So we'll be recording this, sending this out, I'll be following up with each of you with the link to that recording, we'll have it on our website and hope you all have a very successful rest of your school year.
Thanks for everything, Tracy, see you guys next month.
Thanks.